I want to welcome everybody. Two groups are sponsoring this, the State Tax and Economy Committee, and the First Hill Unit of the League of Women Voters. I'll tell you a little bit about the Tax Committee. We work to try and become knowledgeable about ways to get fair and sustainable taxes, because as you know, we have the most regressive taxes in the nation. We have insufficient revenue for the services we want to provide, and we have extreme income inequality. And I would like to introduce Madeline Betts, who's Chair of the League of Women Voters First Hill Unit. Would you like to tell a little bit about the League?
Sure. Hi. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that empowers voters' defense democracy through advocacy, education, and litigation. Our co-sponsor is an example of our efforts. Welcome, Mr. Lewis and other participants.
All right, I would like to tell you now just a little bit about our speaker, Andrew Lewis, Councilmember Lewis. He is a native. You're a fifth-generation Washingtonian, and you were born and raised in Seattle, the son of a heavy equipment operator for Seattle City Light and a nurse at Harborview. And Lewis believes that Seattle needs to protect, serve, and advocate for all its citizens. Councilman Lewis most recently worked as Assistant City Attorney in the Seattle City Attorney's Office. His practice focused on trial litigation, making charging decisions on criminal cases, and diverting low-level offenders to participate in community-based diversions like the Choose 190 program. That sounds great. Before practicing law, Councilman Lewis served as the Seattle Human Rights Commission, the Rental Housing Inspection Stakeholder Committee, the Executive Board of the 36 District Democrats, as delegate to the Martin Luther King County Labor Council, and as campaign manager for Councilman Nick Licata's successful 2009 reelection campaign. Councilmember Lewis graduated with a BA in History and Political Science from the University of Washington, and holds a Master's Degree from the London School of Economics and a Law Degree from the University of California at Berkeley. So, we're pleased to have you here today, and there are a lot of hot topics, as we've been saying, that you are in charge of in Seattle, and I hope you'll answer a lot of our questions. Councilmember Andrew Lewis.
Thank you so much. So, should we jump into the questions? That was a pretty comprehensive introduction. So, I'm happy to get started.
Well, wouldn't you like to give a little overview of what you're doing now and what you're in charge of with the City Council?
Yes, I'm happy to do that. Yeah, I can jump in and do that certainly as a starting point. So, thank you so much for having me. It's always good to come here and join folks at the Horizon House and the League of Women Voters. I think this is the third forum like this that I've done, and I hope soon we'll be able to do it in person rather than Zoom. And I would be happy to come by in person and see everybody and appreciate the invitation regardless of the medium where we're meeting. But in any event, you know, as was established in the introduction, I'm a member of the City Council. I represent District 7, which includes downtown Magnolia, Queen Anne, South Lake Union, parts of First Hill, including Horizon House and Pioneer Square. And my committee that I currently chair encompasses the city's public assets and homelessness policy. So, public assets is kind of a broad category historically that mostly referred to parks and the Seattle Parks Department. But it also includes, as I just mentioned, the Woodland Park Zoo as a public asset that the city owns. It also includes the aquarium. The library, Seattle Public Library, falls under my committee, as does the Seattle Center and the Office of the Waterfront. In addition to that, I'm on the Board of the King County Regional Homelessness Authority, which as of now, as of about a year and a half ago, is the primary homelessness department for both King County and the city of Seattle. So, those are the general things that fall under currently the committee that I chair on the City Council. Some of the big things in front of us, obviously, are continuing to work on getting the Regional Homelessness Authority well-resourced to respond to the crisis of homelessness in the city of Seattle and regionally throughout the rest of King County. We are also going to start looking at a renewal of the King County, or sorry, the Seattle Metropolitan Park District levy, which in 2014 became the primary supplementary source of funding for the Seattle Parks and Recreation. And that work is going to be starting in earnest later this spring. For those who have been following along, in 2014, we made a decision as a city to adopt a Metropolitan Park District rather than doing regular park levies. So, the City Council now votes in six-year intervals for a park district spending plan. So, it's without a vote of the general public. It's just a vote of the City Council serving as a Board of Park Commissioners. So, that work has been delayed by two years. We were supposed to do that renewal in 2020. It was delayed due to the uncertainty posed by COVID for a period of two years. And so, we will now be seeking a renewal of that district for another six-year term, starting this spring. And that'll be a very large part of the work that my committee sorts through, given the magnitude of that investment, several hundred million dollars of parks and recreation funding. So, those are the big areas of focus for my committee. In addition to the committee I chair, I also serve on the Public Safety Committee, where I'm now Vice Chair of the Public Safety Committee. Councilmember Herbald is the Chair. So, there's a variety of different projects and initiatives that my office has been engaged in, all under that committee as well. So, I'm happy to answer any questions about the scope of work between those two different policy areas where I've been spending most of my time. I also serve on the Department of Neighborhoods Committee as a member, and the Finance and Housing Committee. So, a variety of different things where I've been spending my time as a council member. So, with that, you know, I'm happy to spend the balance of time answering questions, more specific questions for what's on the mind of folks that are here today, and happy to get down into the details with everybody.
You don't want to, before we get started with the questions, would you like to say what are the top issues that you're talking, the parks levy? And what about, of course, the public safety and housing are big things too? Well, we can start with the question. Do you have things you would like to say about that before we start with the questions? Or you're happy with that?
Sure. I think some of the big, I'll treat that as the first question. I think that some of the really, really big things that we're going to be dealing with in the parks levy are going to be, first, community centers. We have a lot of community centers in the city of Seattle that are nearing the end of their useful life in terms of how long the building, you know, has existed, and municipal pools that were built for the first time in the 40s and 50s and are due for an update. Some of them, you know, a couple decades beyond their expected lifespan. Typically, those are a 50-year asset. So, those, you know, figuring out a way to replace some of those community centers with updated, modern facilities is something that'll be a big area of focus. And I would expect to be a big part of the district renewal since they're capital-intensive projects. On housing, you know, we, on a related note, we have the housing levy coming up for the city of Seattle that we have to craft with the Office of Housing to determine what our priorities and goals are going to be there. One thing that's very promising is we had a very good legislative session for housing investments. There's hundreds of millions of dollars that the state has put aside for the acquisition and creation of affordable housing, and figuring out ways we can marshal city resources to take advantage of that funding. And hey, sorry about that. I'm back now. I don't know what happened. I don't know if that was on my end or yours, but in any event, I'm back. Sorry about that.
Yes, good. We're glad to see you again. So, you were on housing, and we didn't hear anything about that.
Oh, well, how about this? Why don't we just open it up to questions? And I'm sure we'll cover our territory.
Okay, I think Joan was going to do the first question. Was that right, Madeline?
Yes.
Joan, you can go ahead. Unmute yourself.
Okay. Councilman Lewis, we've heard that you recently got married and just returned from your honeymoon. Congratulations, because one of the great joys of life, I believe, is finding one person you want to share the rest of your life with. So, we congratulate you on that milestone.
That's wonderful.
So, my question is that I participated in your Zoom Town Hall sessions and found on other issues facing the city, to your credit, you included a great many people, stakeholders, if you will, in the process when reaching a decision or offering legislation. So, what I'm asking is, how do you justify the restrictions you are proposing for Pike Place that will impact at least 500 merchants and vendors who are very, their very livelihood depends on open access to Pike Place and also the hundreds of people who live in the market? I know that you have heard from friends of the market and the director, the PDA, who do not agree with you. So, when will you hear testimony from the very people who would be impacted by this decision? From dawn to dusk, this is a working market. When will their voices be heard?
Joan, thank you for that question about the potential future of what modes of travel are allowed on Pike Place. The first thing I would say is that there is no proposal, so there's nothing to testify or discuss. Right now, we're just having a conversation as a community. So, there is no formal written-down plan that anyone in the city has for changing the modes of travel that are allowed on Pike Place, you know, partly because of some of the considerations that you just raised. You know, first and foremost, Pike Place Market is a working market. It's not some kind of novelty or, you know, tourist attraction like Fisherman's Wharf in San Francisco, you know, which isn't, you know, really a fisherman's wharf anymore for all intents and purposes. You know, Pike Place Market is a real and functional public urban market. So, you know, any conversation about what modes of travel are allowed on Pike Place need to, first and foremost, begin and end with the underlying identity of that space as a working market. So, that would mean that no matter what, unconditionally deliveries, you know, have to be allowed in and out of that market at any time, unconditionally, regardless of the circumstances, to maintain a working, functional market. It certainly means that local access for residents and merchants and the folks in particular who are the stall-based merchants who set the stall up every day, typically out of the back of a vehicle, would need to have that access unconditionally and without, and in a completely uninhibited way. You know, conversations that have been raised by members of the public regarding the general access of personal vehicles on Pike Place without any kind of limitation on the traffic in that corridor are things that have been raised by the community throughout COVID writ large. And that's partly why we're discussing it. It's not just me. You know, I'm discussing it because hundreds of constituents have raised it as a potential issue that they want to see addressed. I do think that there are very strong arguments to be made that a good percentage of the vehicle traffic that uses Pike Place doesn't need to be there anymore. It's not a well-utilized corridor for through traffic. The amount of parking that's on it that isn't utilized by merchants is fairly minimal. But there is no conversation around totally banning traffic on Pike Place. That's nothing anyone has proposed, you know, let alone me, myself. But there are potential conversations around whether we still want to allow, to allow any vehicle to use Pike Place under any circumstances, which is, you know, in parts of the city, not something that we allow. I mean, Occidental is a good example in Pioneer Square of that. But, you know, nothing's going to be done without extensive consultation with the market and the PDA.
Joan, did you want to say about handicapped?
Is there a schedule set? Because I know the market people who are being impacted by this were thought they were going to meet in January, then in February, then in March. And so, there is no date set. That's what people are waiting to find out. When is it Councilman Lewis is going to hear what they have to say about whatever proposal you have? When will that?
So, Joan, my understanding is I've made myself available on several occasions, and those events have been canceled, or those meetings have been canceled because we haven't been able to find a time that works for all of those market stakeholders. So, you know, it hasn't been on my end that those meetings have been canceled. I'm happy to make myself available to hear people's feedback on if vehicle access was limited, what some of the concerns people have are. Then, I'm not going to, no one's going to make any decisions in advance of getting that feedback. So, if you're connected with some of the folks that are trying to organize that, you know, that's great. Let them know that I'm certainly still willing to meet. My understanding is those meetings haven't been canceled by me. They've been canceled by the organizers because they haven't been able to find times that work for all of the people they want to get in the meeting. So, I'm happy to do it.
I will pass that on.
Madeline, you want to ask?
I wanted to, this is a safety issue, a police safety issue. It was suggested in the Seattle Times editorial last year that Mayor-elect Bruce Harrell should convene a public safety summit to chart a new chorus, resolve inconsistencies among law enforcement, prosecutors, defenders, and advocates and residents. I think a robust discussion is sorely needed. How such a public safety summit, has that been discussed between the mayor and the council? And if so, is there a timeframe?
Yeah, we're totally in favor of having a summit like that. Mayor Harrell has not indicated an interest so far in meaning that. I think part of what bogs it down is, you know, it's like, who all do you involve in a public safety summit like that? I know that the editorial proffered a couple of different groups, but at a certain level, is that too unwieldy? And I think that that's probably what, partly what's bogging them down. I think it's a great idea for the reasons that that editorial articulated. I think it's really important to make sure that there's consistency between all of the different players in our local criminal legal system. You know, one way to narrow it might be to just have the summit be, you know, the mayor's office, the city and county councils, and the city attorney and the county prosecutor, and leave the judges and the public defenders out of it, and have it be more of an enforcement summit to coordinate enforcement strategies. I don't really know what could be gained by including judges in those meetings, because we can't, you know, we can't tell judges, you know, what decisions to make as a matter of policy. Only they can kind of decide that based on the circumstances of a given case or issue. So, I don't think that we would be able to, I don't know what it would add to have the judges be part of a summit like that. But, you know, I do think that there's been a lot of coordination. There's been a lot more conversation between the City Council and the mayor since Mayor Harrell's election. I've probably talked to Mayor Harrell more in three months than I did to Mayor Durkin in two years, mostly because Mayor Durkin didn't really have any interest in talking to council members about anything, despite our best efforts. So, you know, and I think we're seeing in some places a lot of improvement in public safety in the last three months. So, you know, I do think the Harrell administration is moving pretty quick out of the gate to start addressing some of these big chronic issues, particularly downtown and in Little Saigon. But yes, the summit would be helpful.
There's been a question regarding public safety and Freeway Park. I saw that you were working on a levy for parks, community centers. Well, we live near Seneca and Freeway Park, and there are no bathroom facilities, and encampments are coming our way. And we wondered what is being done about this and why not putting bathrooms for people in that park? What would be our take on that?
Yes, you know, the city of Seattle has a woefully small number of public restrooms. And, you know, especially in the city core. You know, it's funny, because we have, you know, like, under Pioneer Park, the pergola, there's an old, you know, mothballed public restroom that's been closed since the 40s, right? That's underground there. And in Westlake, obviously, right? There used to be an underground restroom that I think was completely filled in as part of an urban renewal project with concrete. So, you know, we have a long history of not only not building park restrooms, but getting rid of some of the ones that we did have. So, you know, the council has funded a couple of new restroom expansions over the course of the last few years. The Durkin administration wasn't terribly interested in them based on our past experience with the self-cleaning toilets in Pioneer Square. So, it's not like they didn't have, you know, like some good cause for skepticism. But, you know, there's ways to do it, you know, if you travel abroad, as I recently did. And thank you again for the congratulation on my recent nuptials. We went to Spain and Portugal for a honeymoon, and it's common in Europe, as folks here who have traveled to Europe are well-aware, to have attended bathrooms. And maybe that's something that we should look into if that's part of the issue, is concerns about isolation or safety or a deteriorating hygiene. Maybe we need to also have public restrooms, at least in certain areas, be attended if there are some of those concerns. So, you know, it's something a lot of us continue to be interested in on the council. The one example of a very successful recent public restroom that's been installed, if anyone ever gets up to Ballard, the Portland Lou, which is located at the Ballard Commons, is a design that originated in Portland. That's a, it's a public restroom concept that is easy to maintain and easy to deploy. And, you know, I think the hope when that was installed four, three or four years ago was that we would do more of those, and we haven't so far. So, it's something we continue to work on. And, you know, maybe that's a good thing to flag for the levy renewal. Maybe that is something we could focus on putting in there.
All right. Should we see if somebody is, if somebody that is attending would like to ask a question, just raise your hand or you could put a flag on the, down below. Peter?
Thank you. Thank you for being here, Councilmember Lewis. As you know, one of my main occupations in the public interest is homelessness and housing. I'd like to ask you about the council's position vis-à-vis Mayor Harrell and see whether there's a sync or not a sync, S-Y-N-C, between them, and if there's more that the council can do to deal with the human part of the equation of public safety. I have a element here from the Seattle Times. Back in February, he was reported by the Seattle Times to say that he and his administration are committed to providing addiction and mental health services and shelter resources for a homeless population along with law enforcement actions. Now, the current emphasis seems to be on the police side and the prosecution side, and the provision of human services to folks who need help seems to be taking very little emphasis. So, what will you do as Chair of the committee responsible for Seattle's homeless policy, I guess alongside many others responsible, to support? And I would say, in fact, insist upon the mayor have a plan, supported by the council, adequately funded, to provide the services and facilities beyond just doing sweeps to make police actions truly effective and to serve people who need help.
Yeah, Peter, thank you so much for that question. That's a really, you know, something that we're really kind of struggling through currently. And, you know, we really need to focus on how to strike that right balance right now. Because the first thing I will say, I mean, I'll answer your question, but at the front of it, we really do need to acknowledge that over the past couple of years, a massive amount of the crime that the city's been experiencing have been related to homeless encampments. That does not mean that homeless people are necessarily committing the crime, but it does mean that the encampments themselves are magnets that correlate to a higher amount of crime. So, this is really just important to acknowledge at the front, because the shootings, in 2021, homeless encampments were the biggest single thing that correlated to shootings for the increase in shooting statistics. We had a 122% increase in shootings in homeless encampments, way up from the previous year. And again, in most of those cases, the overwhelming majority, the victims were people experiencing homelessness, not the perpetrators. So. It it does, I I do want to acknowledge at the front that there is sort of an enforcement component here. To to removing the encampments. That said, if you don't provide people a place to go, you're just moving the encampment somewhere else. And with it, that encampment is going to take a lot of those issues that we just discussed with it to some other neighborhood. So, look, here is what I think. We need to build on, and I don't know if you're familiar with this program. But a a great program is started during the pandemic called Just Care. Which is started by the Public Defender Association, Asian Counseling and Referral Services, Chief Seattle Club. And Evergreen Treatment Services, working together in sort of a consortium. And and to your point, what it does is. Puts people in hotel based shelters with wraparound services. And those services include mental health and addiction support, and it's been very, very successful getting people out of encampments. That program goes away in June and I'm working with the Harold administration right now on ways to keep it going. And there is, there is a consensus that everyone wants to keep it going. No one wants it to go away. There's some ways to work around the edges for the economy of scale with it because it's an expensive program. It's mostly expensive because we're leasing the hotels. If we acquire the hotels, the price goes way down. To to something that would be manageable over time. So we have a lot of resources for acquisition, as we mentioned earlier, from the state and and from other places and the federal government actually too. A lot of money for acquisition of hotels and hotels. So the hope is that we'll be able to. Figure out a way to save that program and and it can, it can kind of provide that other component. That Mayor Harold, I know, you know, is sincere in wanting to include. I I think part of the the more enforcement heavy response for the first half of this year. Has just been that that we have had a fairly large number of encampments. That have kind of been overdue for a little bit of. Of an enforcement component, given some of the issues they presented with. But, you know, we're we're not going to get out of this problem just by moving encampments around. But it, we have to invest in Just Care and we have to to make sure people have the resources they need.
Councilmember, my my sense is that this community very strongly supports the law enforcement and public safety aspect. But just as equally feels that we need to have the social services to scale. Now, if you were to just preserve the the just now, what's the name of the program? Just care, if you were just to preserve that. Where, how does that fit in relationship to the scale of the problem that's taking place in downtown? Are enough people going to be saved, served if he doesn't renew Just Care?
This all gets very difficult if we don't. If we if we don't keep Just Care going because. It it's the only program that's directly responsive to some of the very big public health limitations that a lot of these folks downtown have. So a lot of folks here might be familiar with, you know, like tiny house villages, for example, right, which are great, a a great enhanced shelter option. But typically not a great fit, for example, for. You know, someone who suffers from schizophrenia and might also have meth addiction, they need a little bit more. Support. And Just Care is the only thing that caters to that subgroup of people who are a smaller number of people experiencing homelessness. But are presenting the biggest public disorder challenges. So it it really is essential, in addition to this other stuff we're doing, that Just Care continue. Because it's the only thing that that is providing those folks a place to be that isn't the street. And, you know, we we'll be reopening sort of this big loophole if it isn't. And and look, you know, I'm confident that we're going to keep it going because there is consensus. You know, like, it's not like we have to fight the Harold administration over it. They they, there's alignment on wanting to keep it, it's just a matter of figuring out how to how to put it into the budget and. And how we do it, but but we, you know, it's good, it's a good thing.
If I have one more follow up question, not so much on the substance, but on the arrangements inter intergovernment. How how is that program, for example, going to meld into the regional homeless authority, if at all? Or does that remain a city responsibility?
Which which program? I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear.
The Just Care now? I'm sorry, I keep on remembering.
Yes, yes, yeah, no, the the goal, the goal would be to make sure everything is with the regional homelessness authority. It we we would not, we don't want to create redundant homelessness bureaucracy, so that the goal would be. You know, the contract for those providers would sit with the regional homelessness authority, who would in turn, you know, contract out. To to the providers.
Well, my plea to you is give enough money for the problem.
And what can we do to help? Okay, Mary Margaret. You got to unmute.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis, I'm so glad that you are so good at communicating. To come back to the toilet issue in Freeway Park. If you haven't had a chance to walk around our Freeway Park Loop, I hope maybe you might do that someday. And then you would perceive the fact that there are many of our homeless neighbors who are living there. Is there some reason why we could not have rather permanently the Santa cans? That construction workers use? There have been some that have been placed on Seneca at about the Seventh Street. Access to the park, is there some reason why that couldn't be the temporary? Way of helping our neighbors be. Until we get a permanent solution?
That's a good suggestion. I'm happy to look into that. Yeah, I I I don't have a have a great answer on why we can't do that right now. So I'm happy to look into that and get back to.
And would, did you have a comment on this?
In in Freeway Park, I think there is a. There is a restroom and if it's just as you go through. Eighth Avenue coming toward Horizon House, you make a turn, there is a restroom with brick right there. It's it's sort of backs up to some of the parking that's down below for loading into Horizon House. I don't know what's wrong with that restroom. I don't know whether it's usable, but at least it is one. The other, the reason I really wanted to mention this is that you've got this nice plan and you want everything in place. You want it balanced with care, you want it balanced with legal. And the pace of that is so slow. How long do you think the health of downtown can hang on? With the slow grinding way you're going about housing?
Yeah, well, you know, I I agree with the whole premise of what you're saying. You know, the the person who determines how fast we can go is the mayor, not the council, unfortunately, right? So, I mean, I I have a conversation like this probably every day with executive officials who. I I don't think are moving quickly enough to respond to the acuity of the crisis we're facing downtown.
Was was that part of the altercation with Chop? Who wanted to pull funds and get it going within NGOs so that things could happen much faster? Was that part of that? Can you explain that some more?
Well, it's it's a, it's a long story, and I'll I'll try to be brief with it. But to, well, a year and a half ago. Frank Chop and I went to get two million dollars to build more tiny houses in the state legislature. The Durkin administration would not use that money to build tiny houses because they didn't feel like they were like ready. Or or able to implement, to your point, like implement spending the money. Even though there were providers that were ready to go to NGOs, to your point, that were ready to go. So after a year of trying to figure it out. Frank lost patience and just had the state directly give the money to the NGO. Because the city could not move quickly enough. And it was incredibly irritating and Frank gave the city every opportunity to to get the money out. And the city never did it. So, yes, that that is a a good summary of it. And it's, you know, another good example recently, not related to homelessness. But related to this issue of of the city not being very nimble. Did anyone follow the? The hundred million dollars in bridge repair money that the Harold administration said they weren't gonna use? So, Councilmember, Councilmember Peterson, Councilmember Herbold and I. Got a hundred million dollars into the budget for bridge, shoring up bridges. Because our bridges are in really bad shape in the city. And the Harold administration basically said they thought that was going to be too hard, at least right now, to 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 actually spend that money. To fix these bridges. And it it's it's a big problem in the city, the ability for the for city departments to effectively execute. On getting money out the door to fix some of these issues that are accumulating, so. It's something I didn't fully appreciate till I was on the council that, you know, it's not just a matter of funding something, right? It's a matter of. Of implementing and and we've had a lot of implementation challenges over the past several years. That sit with the mayor's office, because the mayor for the charter is, the the mayor has to implement. The mayor and their departments have to implement the budgets and the policy that that are put forward, so. You know, we continue to to struggle with moving quicker on that and and I I try to to not be. You know, sort of pigeonholed, like, you know, that's why I'm working with Frank and other people, because if if the city can't fix something. Maybe I can work with state folks to to get something done, right? So, you know, we're going to keep moving and and, you know, I don't want to be too hard on Bruce, because I think Bruce is. Is is doing a good job to to get the city sort of staffed up again, so we can start making progress on some of these issues. But he he's just been left a really hollowed out group of executive departments and he's got. You know, a big job in front of him and. You know, we we stand ready to help him, but it's, you know, it's discouraging when there's money. And there's a problem and we can't get the money out to fix a problem is incredibly frustrating. And and we're going to continue trying to do better on that.
So it's a staffing problem with the city? The mayor's office, is that right?
You know, and and I don't know the full extent, whether it's just staffing or it's just like bureaucratic will. You know, it depends on the issue, you know, like, I don't know. It depends on the issue, but it it getting something done, like getting something actually out in the community and done. Is is a challenge, so. You know, but but, you know, but we we have like, you know, like I said before, like that Just Care program. It it took forever, but we did get it going and it's been going for a year and it's been great. So there are things that have, you know, lightning has struck in a bottle and things have gotten done. It's not all, you know, gloom. But but there's a lot more that needs to happen to the point that Anne was making. You know, because the the rate of atrophy in downtown is faster than than our ability to get stuff. Out there, right? So that's what's been frustrating.
Is there something we can do about it? We as citizens?
Yes, I mean, you know, you should invite Bruce back to come and and have a have a conversation.
Neil's working on that.
And we're, yeah, and remind Bruce that you're paying attention and be like, you know, we. There there's plenty of money and resources to do this, like your team has to get together and you have to, you have to execute, you know? I I think it's good for for him to be aware of that and and I know he shares a lot of these frustrations, right? Again, it it hasn't even been a hundred days yet that he's been in there, so. You know, he's trying.
To one of the arguments is that if you have a healthy commercial downtown, you've got more tax revenue to do what you need to do. And when when businesses fold downtown, you lose the tax revenue that. In your budget and then things are even slower, so there. There is. A motive to get at it.
Yes, I I completely agree. You know, the the downtown is the, it's like the heart of the general fund. You know, and when it, when it's healthy and and it's beating. A lot more resources to do things when when it's, when it's having issues. That the the city, the whole city has issues. If if, you know, if downtown sneezes, the city gets a cold. Right, so. Yeah.
Doris, did you have a question? Doris, is that Doris in down there in the corner? Oh, it's Jean.
Yes, I have a question and I think I am not muted. I very much appreciate all this. Need and attention about downtown and homelessness and and getting the city to be functioning. In its downtown businesses particularly, but but all over the the city. But I'd like us to step back also and pay attention to what the IPPCC report. UN scientists and politicians report just pointed out that the earth is headed toward a really dire, dire circumstances. But we can fix, we can overcome most of those if we start now making major changes. So, starting now, making major changes is the part that is easy to forget once people say, oh, it's not hopeless. Cities can be a major portion of that opportunity and so. Keeping, you know, paying attention to how we can get more and more people in the cities, which is happening anyhow. People are choosing to go into cities or or urban areas. And increase the density, so there will be enough people to take the bus and people can walk to where they want to go. All of those functions include having sidewalks repaired, having bike lanes available. Having. Legislation that the city has started off on saying that, yes, we're going to phase out all. Oil furnaces and and phase out any new construction with gas stoves and so on. How do you see your role in working on current problems with the eye to how each of them? Can help us decrease the carbon that we send off into the atmosphere?
So, I wish we could be talking more about this, frankly. Because as you point out, it is the existential threat to to the survival of the planet. And to our civilization as we know it is climate change. And we know that cities can play a really big role. You know, Copenhagen is a really great example of a city that that has like shown, if you really put your back into it. You know, you, cities can make a sizable difference in CO2 emissions. And globally, I think cities represent or are anticipated to represent something like eighty percent of CO2 emissions over the next fifty years. Or something like that. Yeah, so. You, a couple of, you know, one of the problems in terms of sequencing is. You know, we don't really have space to have that conversation as a city until we fix some of the issues that we've been discussing. Up to this point around homelessness and public safety. Because if we don't feel fundamentally safe and if we don't. And if there, if we have sort of the sense of unease and disordered, you know, I'm sure a lot of folks. Especially those of you who have lived in Seattle for a very long time. You know, we've just never seen our city like this and it's disheartening and it undermines our morale and the quality of life and and it makes us despondent. It's hard for us to focus. It's hard for us to focus, uh, um, on some of these other issues. Uh, until sort of those existential urban problems are addressed. Uh, so that's the first caveat I want to say. That aside, um, the city council has actually done a fair number of, um. Uh, climate related things that'll have a big impact over the last two years that that also haven't gotten a lot of attention. Um, and Jean, to your point about energy code, uh, we made really, really aggressive updates to our energy code. Uh, both for new residential buildings and for new commercial buildings. Basically requiring everybody to get, um, electric appliances and electric heat pumps, um, for, uh, for boilers. Um, with very few exceptions, like I I'm I'm, uh, talking right now with, uh, um, MOPA, uh, former formerly, um, or formerly. The Experience Music Project of the Seattle Center, because they want to do a boiler replacement. Um, and they can't use their preferred, the preferred replacement, because it would be a fossil fuel boiler. And we're like, no, sorry, new rules. You can't, um, we we have commercially viable electric boilers now, you have to use one. That's the new rule, categorical, no exceptions. Um, that's gonna make a very big difference. Of course, it's only new construction, we're not, you know, we're not forcing, um, people to update. But, you know, but it's a, it's a start and it's significant. It's one of the most aggressive energy code changes anywhere in the country. So that's the first thing. Um, to your point about different modes of getting around the city. Um, you know, like alternatives to, um, to driving, like walking and biking. Uh, I was able to get in the last budget that we just did in the fall. Um, a modest increase to the commercial parking tax, which is a tax on private, um. Uh, private parking lots. So like, if you ever go, for example, to, um, you know, Pacific Place, uh, or anywhere with a big, a big private garage. Um, a percentage of what you pay, you know, is is taxed and commercial parking tax that goes to the city, to the state, whatever. Um, we hadn't raised our commercial parking tax for, um, over a decade. Um, and it's, you know, and it's a tax on on commercial parking i- in a certain sense, you know, I, you know, I mean, I. I drive, so I'm not, I'm not accusing anyone of of malice, but but it's sort of like paying a sin tax, um, on on, you know, you're driving, you're parking. You know, you should contribute back, um, in, uh, in paying, paying a little bit of a tax on, uh, on parking somewhere. Uh, and that money goes into transportation. So what we did is we we did a a, uh, two percent increase in the commercial parking tax to put that money, um, into. Uh, increasing, um, the amount of protected, um, sidewalks, bike lanes, uh, multimodal, um, uh, travel. And, uh, we're really looking forward to, um, uh, seeing some of that realized this year. Uh, because that's a, that's a dedicated, it's the first time we've done a dedicated revenue stream. Um, for, uh, what we call Vision Zero, which is the goal of, um. By twenty thirty, not having a single pedestrian or bike, uh, death, um, in the city of Seattle from a traffic collision. So, uh, those are some small things that that we've been able to do. Um, you know, right now, while we're we're focused more on the public safety and homelessness crisis. Uh, and my hope is that, uh, over the next two years, if we're able to get those issues to to abate. We can focus more of our energy on, um, uh, climate goals.
Well, what about your, um, lowering the speed limit? You talk about tra- traffic and, uh, the safety there. Uh, is that a possibility? People are very concerned. Uh, I think Madeline had a question on on Boren Avenue. And the speed is great, which we use a lot and the speed is quite fast there.
Yeah, we we've lowered, um, speed limits and quite, the Mayor Durkin lowered speed limits quite a lot, um, over the course of her tenure. Um, and the the city has a lot of deference on on what they set the speed limit at. Um, lots of neighborhood arterials, I think, got cranked down to, um, you know, twenty-five or twenty, uh, miles an hour. Um, so I'm I'm always happy to to, um, bring forward some other places where where that might not have been realized. Uh, to the attention of the city traffic engineer. And I I'm I'm always looking for opportunities to lower speed limits in places. Um, one one thing that I would add to that too is, um. You know, it's one thing to lower speed limits, but you have to enforce it, right? And I think that we, while we've, we've lowered what the number is on a sign. Um, if people are kind of used to driving at a certain speed, they will unless there's some kind of, um. Uh, enforcement or more commonly, um, changing the design. Like if you can put in traffic calming, like if you can put in, you know, because we, you know, you're never gonna have, um. You know, a traffic officer looking at the street twenty-four hours a day. But if you have a speed bump, it's always gonna be there, right? So, so ways that we can also incorporate, um, traffic calming, uh, into, um. Some of these streets to to really enforce by design those speed limits is something I'm really interested in. And that commercial parking tax money will help pay for things like that, which is really good.
But that's another, that's another environmental thing that we could do if we had a a general overall lowering of speed limits.
Yes, yes.
And also that, and that's including hiring more police. Um, I wondered about this, uh, Councilman Sarah Nelson proposed, uh, resolution to implement. Police hiring incentive, has that been adopted by the council, city council?
So council member Nelson, um, has a resolution. That would basically say it's our opinion there should be hiring bonuses, but it it wouldn't, in and of itself, it wouldn't create them. Uh, because that's, that's like the labor management thing that, um, that the mayor would have to do. But it but it would establish that we would like the mayor to do it. Um, Mayor Harold sent us a, um. A report that we requested on the effect of the hiring bonuses last fall, because we did just issue. Um, or we we had on offer, uh, money for hiring bonuses. Um, throughout, uh, the last quarter of two thousand and twenty-one. And the results on that were fairly mixed. Wha- what Chief Diaz has requested, uh, which I think is a great idea. Is there's a lot of demand for relocation, uh, bonuses. Because a lot of lateral officers by nature of being, you know, being a lateral, coming from like another department somewhere else, instead of being a new recruit. Um, have to to relocate, um, if you're, if you're in another state. And through the recruitment process, that's been found to be a barrier, especially since the Puget Sound region is typically more expensive than places officers relocating from. So, um, relocation support is something that the department is requesting. And and I would imagine that there's gonna be majority support to provide that. Um, and that would be, that's within the four corners of the resolution Councilmember Nelson has proposed. Uh, it would, it would, you know, I think that her, the wording she used was just financial incentive bonuses. Which could include a relocation bonus. So, um, we're gonna take that up over the next couple of weeks and I imagine, um, it'll pass.
Thank you. I don't think we have any more questions from my list here.
Okay, I think I, I I don't think we're finished yet. Can can you continue, uh, and?
Yes, yes, I can, yes, I can do a few more minutes.
Okay, if the the violent crime has increased so much recently, twenty percent or something. And is there something besides getting these police, we've, they've been allocated a hundred and twenty-four new police officers have been allocated. And the bonuses might help get them here. But my goodness, it's been quite a while since that's been allocated and nothing's happening. Uh, what can we do to sense, stop this increase in violence?
Yeah, well, a couple of things. I mean, I I think that we will see, um, as we assess the numbers for, um, February onward. Uh, a decrease in violent crime relative to two thousand twenty-one. Because of how aggressively the Harold administration is deploying, um, their resources. So it's not just the, you know, it's not just the number of police, it's also what the police are doing. And Mayor Harold, by adopting this, um, hotspot strategy, instead of just kind of. You know, peanut buttering the police across the entire city, but really focusing in on the places that are providing, um. The largest concentrations of violent criminal activity, I I think we're already seeing an improvement. Uh, you know, Third Avenue today, right now, versus Third Avenue two months ago is a completely different place. Uh, at at least in terms of the disorder. So I, you know, I I do think that part of it is is the overall strategy, not just the police numbers. Um, and you know, I do think, uh, to the conversation we just had. Uh, you know, I I do think that we are gonna see, um, a recruitment increase. It, you know, recruitment, recruitment lags, because officers have to go, if you're new, you have to go through the academy. Right, so there's like a six-month lag to that officer being deployable. So, you know, Danny West needs not wrong when he's like, oh, you know, thirty-four officers left and and only seven, you know, joined. But we have more that are, you know, that are in the academy going through the the process. It's, you know, it's like a lagging indicator. Um, also for the conversation earlier about getting Just Care expanded, Just Care has a very big impact on public safety. Because it helps get rid of the encampments. Like I said earlier, encampments are a big source of the criminal activity. And the shelters that Just Care runs aren't. Um, you know, we've never had a shooting in a tiny house village, we've never had a shooting in a Just Care hotel. So, but the, but if those same people are in encampments, shootings occur. I'm I'm just noticing that the correlation, right? I'm not making a causation or or accusing anyone of anything. So, um, you know, I I do think that the the more focused and, um. Uh, uh, aggressive strategy the Harold administration is is using is gonna start working. Or it has been working. I think we're gonna see that reflected in the data that we get.
Nancy Robinson.
Well, I I've been wondering, uh, if there, any thought has been given to, um, to, uh. To dealing with young people, pre- prevention of of the initiation of that kind of behavior. Um, I think the police are in a good position to get to know kids, know them, uh, to, uh, to, uh, establish, uh, uh. Uh, oh, teams and activities and, uh, help with school and all kinds of things. That could be a positive thing in these kids' lives and, uh, and not lead to the, uh. The problems, uh, in the first place. Yeah. And, you know, I I think bringing up healthy kids is something that we really need to be paying more, more attention to. And and also, you know, there it, there is concern also to in the, uh, increase in, um, suicides among children. And and in mental health issues altogether.
Yeah.
Psychologist, so really.
Because to that point, too, um, you know, one of the things that was really interesting about the shooting data. From two thousand twenty-one was that youth violence was actually down relative to twenty twenty. Uh, through a number of initiatives that the city has had. Um, we we have some great, uh, organizations, um, in Seattle that are really good at working with young people. Who who have, who are at risk, I mean, criminal legal system involved. Um, Choose One Eighty is one of those programs.
What is it?
So Cho- Choose One Eighty is, it's a nonprofit, uh, about giving young people the tools to make better choices. Like, you know, to do a one eighty, hence the, the, hence the name. And, um, it it's a, it's a diversion program for young people who who are involved. You know, who get like a criminal referral for something that's that's not, um, you know, necessarily super serious. Um, you know, like shoplifting or whatever, right? And instead of going to jail, you can go and 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 work with Choose One Eighty. Uh, and it has a very, very low recidivism rate. I think eighty-eight percent of the kids that go through Choose One Eighty are are never in the criminal legal system again, which is great. That's, um, uh, Community Passageways is another one that is designed around, um. Mentorship and structure, uh, for for young people who are more like, um, gang-involved youth. So it's it's for more, you know, people who are who are more intense, um, uh, challenges. And and, uh, are likely to be victims of or perpetrators of violence. Uh, but these initiatives have actually, uh, you know, we have seen, um, a decrease in the amount of young people that are involved. Um, uh, in serious violent crime. Uh, I mean, the, you know, obviously, a lot of our violence is still gang-driven and and it's still a massive problem. But year over year, that's been going down. Uh, but the this, these issues in the homeless encampments are, um, becoming the biggest. Like, those are becoming the biggest drivers. Our our homelessness interventions are not as successful as our youth interventions. So, uh, that, or or at least they're not to scale the same way that the youth ones are. So, so we do have some some great orga- I just strongly encourage folks to get involved with with Choose One Eighty and and, uh, Community Passageways. They do really good work.
The NGO called Youth Care.
Yeah, and Youth Care.
And and how that they try to get kids and immediately, as soon as they hit the street. Make sure that they are, never get acclimated to being on the street and get help for them. And they actually parole a patrol out there. What, how, how big an impact does that organization have?
Yeah, sorry, I I forgot to mention Youth Care. Youth Care is outstanding. Uh, I do a lot of work with them because they're at the intersection of of, um, of homelessness and and interpersonal issues for young people. Uh, and they're, they're a great, um, partner.
How big an impact are they having?
I I think it's significant. It it's significant because they're one of our only providers that are focused exclusively on homeless youth. Uh, you know, because we have a lot of homelessness providers and we have some homelessness providers that are focused, you know, on on, um. Uh, you know, Native Americans or, um, or African Americans. But we only have, you know, one provider focused exclusively on on young people. And young people have, um, uh, very diverse reasons for being housing insecure. Uh, that really do require some unique interventions. Uh, and they have a very big impact. Um, if they, if they weren't, um, if they weren't here, there would be a very big hole, uh, in our our homelessness response. So it's a very, very great organization.
Can we scale up these things?
Yeah, well, I guess. Go ahead. Yeah, I mean, we we do a lot of work with with Youth Care on, um, Youth Care has three shelters. So I think three shelters. Um, and we've done a lot of work to make sure that they can, um, hang on to those, because they they almost had to close. Uh, one of them during COVID and we were able to stop that from happening, which was really important. So, I mean, the first step is just making sure we can maintain what we have, right?
Yeah.
And then the second step is looking at opportunities for scalability. They they've gone through leadership transitions recently too, um, which has kind of limited their ability to grow. So, you know, it it's, um, and they had a fairly tumultuous leadership transition actually about a a year ago. Um, uh, but but fortunately, they had a very, very good interim director in, um, Colleen Echo Hawk, uh, the former mayoral candidate. Um, so she she, um, she's no longer there, but she was their interim director for a while. And and kind of helped stabilize the ship and and keep the morale up. So, uh, yeah, they they've been through a stormy period, uh, but, um, yeah, they're they're a great organization.
Well, I guess maybe we should probably close up the meeting, Madeline.
Yes. All right, thank you very much, Councilman Lewis and the participants today. Uh, we end this meeting knowing that you listened and understood our concerns on issues discussed. We trust you will take these concerns under consideration. Hope to see you again in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Happy to come back anytime. Thank you so much.
Okay, it was great, thank you.
Bye.